Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. Members of the public can view the meeting by clicking the link on the Planning Commission Agenda webpage or using webinar ID 1617637242, passcode 9999999. If you would like to speak during the visitor portion of the agenda or provide testimony on an agenda item, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in using the 6692545252 number, press 9 to alert the chair that you would like to speak. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commissioners are participating this evening. Let the record show that Chair Dai is absent and excused this evening, and currently Commissioner Lawler is not on call. The visitor section of the agenda is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on a non-agenda issuer item. Anyone wishing to speak should indicate this staff and wait for your name to be called. Does anyone wish to address the planning commission on a non-agenda issue? There is no one here tonight, so we will move on to the next. Because we don't have any visitors, we'll move on to the next section. So we are now at Commission Communications. Commission commissioners, are there any communications you'd like to share this evening? No, everyone is shaking their heads. So next up, the only item on the agenda is the application. Oh, sorry, we are now into staff communication. Sorry, Anna, I almost skipped you. Our staff, are there any communications?
Thank you. I'm sorry you're breaking up if that's not just my... I actually do not have these staff communications, so it would not have been a terrible thing to skip me, but you can go ahead and proceed with the meeting.
Okay, sounds good. It sounds like your connection is a little wobbly.
I do not have these staff communications.
All right, we will move on to the work session, and looks like Commissioner Lawler has turned us. Hello? All right, the only item on the agenda is the application for the Parking Policy and Code Project. The order of the work session tonight will be as follows. We will begin with the city staff presentation, followed by discussion and questions of staff by the commission. The Planning Commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes. Members of the public can view the meeting by clicking on the link on the Planning Commission Agenda webpage or using webinar ID 1617637242, passcode 999999. If you would like to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. Calling in using the 6692545252 number, press 9 to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Once called on by the chair, you'll be asked to unmute and speak to the commission. And so we will now begin with the staff presentation. So staff, might I say something?
Thank you, Vice Chair. This is Brian Martin. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager with City, and I work in that Community Development Department. I trust you can see the screen in the presentation. Great.
Yep.
Thank you. With me tonight is Alina Stassen, Associate Planner, who helps develop the draft code language. Jenna Hughes, who's also an Associate Planner and the Project Manager for this project, and Lead Writer for the code, is currently attending another meeting on a different project and may join us later if that meeting ends before this one. In your materials, you have a staff memo that provides some overview of the project and the draft code, and attached to that are draft code provisions. Your questions and comments on the draft code will be extremely helpful, so we can revise and improve the code as needed prior to the scheduled March 1 Planning Commission hearing. Okay. So first, I have to explain a little bit about why we're here. The former Governor Brown signed an executive order directing state agencies to reduce climate pollution. And in response, the Land Conservation and Development Commission adopted the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules. There's a lot of rules in that package. Some of those relate to parking. So that'll be what we're focusing on tonight, because that's the first thing that the city has to do. A good chunk of them took effect on January 1. The city is applying those directly, the state rules directly. We haven't had time to change the code yet to comply with that part. And most of the other provisions are due to be... Sorry, we need to change our code by June 30 of this calendar year to comply. And the development code changes we're talking about tonight would make the city's code consistent with all the state's climate rules related to parking, except some bicycle parking ones that we don't have to worry about for a couple of years. And I should note really quickly that the climate-friendly rules address a lot of other topics that aren't the subject of tonight's discussion that the Planning Commission likely will even hear about later in future years, including how we do our transportation system plans for the city. So what are those rules? This slide summarizes the majority of the ones that we're going to be talking about tonight. And the first point is that we... The state rules require us to reduce or eliminate minimum parking requirements in certain situations. So this batch up here at the top is the ones that took effect already on January 1. We can't require more than one space per unit for middle housing, which is duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and townhouses, and multifamily housing citywide. So that's one that we're already implementing if new applications come in. The second one is we can't have any minimum parking, off-street parking requirements for the things that you see there in the list, including affordable housing, childcare, homeless shelters, et cetera. And then the third component of that is the city can't require minimum off-street parking requirements near MAX stations and West stations. So that's within three-quarter mile of those stations, and on frequent bus corridors, within one-half mile of those corridors. So that is, for example, I think of TV Highway going west toward Hillsborough or Hall Boulevard going south out of downtown. Those are just two examples of corridors that would match that frequent corridor designation. Second chunk is one little thing about electric vehicle charging infrastructure. For new multifamily buildings with five or more units, the city must require the developer to provide electrical conduit essentially to the parking lot. So 40% of the parking spaces that are provided could have vehicle charging stations. They don't have to provide the charging stations. They may do that whenever they like, but the electrical stuff is there when they're ready. And then the third piece, which are in the draft code that you see, are off-street parking maximum limits. In certain parts of town, it's actually centers and along bus corridors. And you'll see more about that later. Okay, so that was what we knew we had to do. The other piece was a choice that the city had. Can I comply this way or that way? And the path that the City Council chose, we... In a work session, so like what we heard from them in September, is the city should remove all minimum off-street parking requirements for all uses of all lots citywide. Our other choice was to comply with the big package of complicated, onerous, expensive state requirements that had nothing to do with Beaverton's situation or circumstances. Honestly, it was kind of a false choice. I think the state didn't really want us to pick that one, so they made it really uncomfortable. So the council chose to remove minimum off-street parking requirements. Great, and... All of those are kind of wrapped up in the code changes that you see. So, or the draft anyway. Before we get into the specifics on the code, I wanted to talk a little bit about what happens when off-street parking gets removed and what benefits or issues might come up, and what else we can do besides regulate parking to deal with transportation. So I think first off, there could be benefits. Parking is a major development obstacle for many projects, because it's expensive, and it takes up room on the site. So if no minimum off-street parking is required, and developers and property owners get to choose how much to provide, we think more buildings will be financially and physically feasible without those requirements. So the city should see more buildings for needed housing and businesses and jobs, for example. It could be that less surface parking area could reduce heat-out in effect, caused by the sun beating down on pavement. Could actually, we might see less stormwater runoff. Of course, it depends on what else ends up on that land. If it's impervious to, like, it'll be a wash. But I think in general, overall, on aggregate, it's probably a benefit. A recent study also showed that access parking can reduce more driving, so we might see a little bit less driving and emissions if less parking is built rather than more. And there will be fewer situations where people who don't need parking, because perhaps they don't own a car, are paying for parking. An example of when that happens is in an apartment building situation. If they charge one rate for both parking and housing, then folks who don't have a car are paying for parking that they don't use. When they charge separately, then, you know, you get a choice whether to pay for it or not. So overall, that sort of list of things, we think, would tend to provide more benefits to people disproportionately affected by housing scarcity, high housing costs, and climate change. Of course, it could cause issues as well. If developers and property owners provide inadequate parking for demand, that could increase pressure on nearby on-street spaces. That could cause inconvenience to automobile drivers. It also could mean the city might need to expand curb management. So that could either be parking management, where we're doing time limits or pricing or having residential permanent programs, or it could be trying to figure out the best use of that curbside space if it's available, such as for Uber and Lyft drop-off, or deliveries, or loading, or disabled parking. So there's kind of a whole host of things that come up. You start thinking about what the best use of the curb is. And there are other efforts going on regarding part of transportation. There are currently parking management strategies in effect downtown, and that program is growing. In addition, you can think about other ways to move around besides vehicles, walking, rolling, and bicycling, for example. Enhanced transit helps people move around in a different way, where they don't have to park maybe at the end of the trip or the beginning. And complete street design helps facilitate those different kinds of movement. We also expect the city to begin a transportation system plan in the next couple of years, and that would be our chance to change policy and and plan for a different, you know, plan for our transportation future and what policies and projects we would need to facilitate people being able to get around all sorts of different places. So with that, I'll just do a quick code overview. Really interested in what your comments and questions are, so I'll try to... And this information is in your packet, so I'll try to be brief. A large amount of the changes are in Chapter 60 of the Development Code, the proposed changes, including minimums. Because the policy direction is to not have off-street parking requirements, those are deleted. In Chapter 60, you see a lot of red lines in Chapter, or in Table 60, 30, 10, 5A. And the state, as I mentioned before, has new maxims, which is the limit to how many parking spaces you can provide on a lot. And there's some specific limits in state rules and a provision that generally asks cities to cap maximum parking limits at 150% of what our minims were a couple of years, or one year ago, no, sorry, three years ago. So you see some language about that in the draft code as well. We do have the ability to go above that, but it would require some study and some findings that that's necessary. We'd have to kind of show our work and prove our reason for doing that to the state. Chapter 60 also includes parking lot design requirements or changes to comply with the state rules. Larger parking lots must have one of the three things listed there. Solar panels that provide a certain amount of energy, green buildings, public buildings on-site, or canopy, 50th century canopy covering parking area. And there's some landscaping requirements. There is a provision that requires forest trees along driveways for private parking lots. I already talked about the electric vehicle stuff, so I won't repeat it, but it is in Chapter 60 as well. Chapter 40 and 50 are in the Development Code. They are the Applications Chapter and the Prestigious Chapter. The Applications Chapters are basically have approval criteria for different things that people want to do. I want to build an apartment building. I want to build a commercial shopping center. Or a park, whatever. So those are different, so those criteria are in there. And the procedures is kind of what procedures have to follow to get those approved. So there's a lot of references to minimum parking requirements that are deleted, because we're not doing those anymore. That's what's proposed anyway. And the access parking application was deleted because it was excess over what the minimum required is, and we're not going to have a minimum requirement anymore, so it's no longer needed. We also propose to do, rename the parking determination application, the bicycle parking determination, because bicycle parking is the only remaining minimum parking requirements in the code. Parking determination is basically, if you look at our table of bicycle parking requirements, and you can't figure out which use your thing goes into and what your requirement is, there's a process to go through to figure that out. And Chapter 90 is the definition chapter. It has added a definition of studio or dwelling, because the state actually requires us to provide, to, sorry, regulate maximum parking different for studio units. Studios are basically, you know, one room has the kitchen and the living area and the sleeping area, and then there's the, you can have a separate bathroom, thank goodness. We also deleted the parking access and surplus parking definitions, because they are no longer mentioned in the code. If the other draft changes, you know, the other draft changes will be done. So the definition would not be needed anymore. So that's the quick version of the overview. The next steps are a March 1 Planning Commission public hearing. So we'll have time between what we hear from you tonight and what we hear from the public, because there's an engagement process going on right now, to fix, adjust the code before then. And then that would be the hearing, where we would ask the Planning Commission whether to recommend the changes to council. And then we have a scheduled April 18 council first reading and a May 2 public hearing, which puts us effective in June, which is meeting the deadline of June 3 to get what the state provided for us. So with that, we would like to ask the Planning Commission if you have any questions or comments about the draft code amendments.
Hey, Brian, this is Sean Ellis. If you don't mind me kicking it off. Just backing up toward the first part of your slides, you talked about how the council already reviewed the rule and decided to go with... You framed it as kind of a false choice, but they chose the one which was, let's just abandon the minimums, which kind of makes sense. But was there any study or analysis done on, if going that way, what would the likely investment or cost be to Beaverton over the long run as Beaverton has to end up responding to business or residential requests or demands for street investment, parking investment, parking control investment, et cetera, on streets?
The short answer is no. I think the folks who are involved in parking management with the city have an idea of what it takes to run the downtown program, which involves kind of starting to enforce time limits that we already have in downtown, like running a parking garage, and of course, monitoring parking usage. There might be other things they're doing too, but they have an idea of what that costs. They could extrapolate a little bit, but we're in a little bit of an unknown future. It's not certain right now how many, like, off-street parking hotspots or short spots we're going to have, and how much city response is going to be required.
I have a similar question to that. Like, was there any, like, MPS study done to, you know, conclude with how the parking was going to be operated and all that? Like, you know, the data based on, like, population or how many people are passing the rule of stopping, you know, those type of things?
I just want to chime in real quickly, Brian. Anna Slatinsky, Plan Division Manager. So one thing that Brian, I think, was included in another presentation, but I don't think you touched on it at least too much here, which is that if Beaverton had opted to not remove minimum parking citywide, and instead, like, the other paths that the state allowed for in the new rules, it actually would have required the city to implement parking management in significant areas of the city, even if those weren't areas where we actually needed parking management. So when Brian is correct in saying that we didn't do a detailed study, we knew that there was not a situation where we wouldn't be managing parking. It was either we managed parking according to how the state says we have to, whether or not it actually meets Beaverton needs, or does the city retain the autonomy to manage parking where we know it's needed and in a way that it actually works for the city. So Brian, I know that you're more familiar with those details and can elaborate, but I just wanted to kind of put that information as part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add, I have a slide where I could explain all that to you, but I, and I will if you ask me to. But I purposely left it out, because I was hoping we could really focus on the draft code changes. And we want to get them right. We want them to be clear and kind of implement the council direction that we got last fall. But I'm happy to, if you tell me to explain it, I will be happy to do.
Commissioner Lawler?
Don't hurt my hand. Okay, I'm curious, because I did not go and read the OAR. Excuse me for that. But how closely do our code changes adhere to the OAR? In other words, are they verbatim? Basically, you took the OAR text and converted it into the Beaverton code, or were there some areas where you diverged from that? And maybe could you highlight those, if any?
Thank you, Commissioner. The OARs are not written in such a way that we could, for the most part, where we could just copy and paste into our code. They're more... They give cities' direction and instructions about what to do, and leave it up to cities to figure it out, weave it into their code, and like, use our definitions. It just doesn't usually work, so we can just paste it right in. There were examples where there's a sentence or two here and there where we did that.
So pretty much, I guess, you know, at this point, we are administering the OAR directly, because we do not have code language. So I guess, maybe have you encountered any circumstances where you've actually had to apply the OAR directly? And have you found any that our code then would then clarify or help administer the Beaverton's version of these rules? I guess I'm still trying to wrestle with the issue of just using the OAR. Or, and I guess my subtext is that my understanding is that this executive order has been challenged in court. And it is theoretically possible that it could be found to be an action that was not authorized by the governor. And so therefore, you know, we've gone ahead and administered some code changes that may or may not have been found to meet court challenges. So anyway, just kind of wondering, again, maybe just stick with the OAR? Or are they so unworkable that you really think we need to move ahead with this?
Well, there was the piece I discussed before, where they were effective January 1, so 10 days ago. And we are applying those directly. They're sort of clear and objective, like, they're pretty applicable directly. It could be better, but so we're able to do that. And for the January 1 ones, like, we put them in this draft code as well, so we don't have to do that anymore once June, once these are effective. A lot of the other provisions, we just simply couldn't directly apply them. They're not clear. I mean, we're required to have clear and objective standards for housing. The state does not write clear and objective sentences in their administrative rules. So right there, like, we just can't directly apply what they're doing. Plus, as you might notice in the code, there's lots of little edits all over the place that we're doing. And when we're striking things, we have to go fix something over here. So it makes, it's going to make it clearer to the developers and kind of our lives easier if we do our own code. Now, with the lawsuit, I'll address that for a second. That's going to go through the courts. The rules are in effect now. And if they are overturned, we will have to figure out what to do at that point. But right now, we're charging forward, assuming that they're going to be in effect, and we'll have to deal with whatever comes out of that lawsuit, which, and they typically take a bit to get through the Court of Appeals.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking that as a planning commission body, we don't really have a whole lot of discretion at our fingertips with this new code change. That's my thought, but thank you.
Are there other? Oh, Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, and sorry, and this is just ignorance question, getting used to reading these code documents here. Are there no, with adopting the stance of no minimums, are there no carve-outs or expectations for facilities like large public service facilities, public health facilities, hospitals, those kinds of things which often occupy both significant and long-term parking needs?
There wouldn't be any minimum requirements for them, but they're going to be allowed to provide the parking that they choose to provide. If a hospital identifies that they need X amount of parking, they should be able to provide that. Now, if they're running into maximums, you might notice in the maximum section that you're allowed to exceed your maximum if you put it in a parking structure, underground parking, or you tuck the parking under a building. So they would be able to get there. A lot of hospitals have parking structures. They would be able to probably get to where they have an adequate amount of parking for their facility. It's just that the city won't have a number that they have to hit as a number.
Okay, so the answer is no, there is no carve-out for minimums for public service-style buildings.
Yes, thank you for making my answer short. Sorry.
No worries. And then apologies, one more question. A couple of comments in the slides and in the docs reference electric vehicle charging infrastructure for different scenarios. I noticed on one of them in parentheses, it said conduit. When we say electrical charging infrastructure, is that the actual charging stations themselves? Or is it conduit for future installation?
Conduit for future installation.
Okay, cool.
Are there other questions from commissioners? Okay, I will jump in. Um Brian, can you please remind us? I know we talked about this last time, but what I. Maybe this is one of your future studies. What is the kind of um consideration for? People with disabilities and ADA parking stalls that presumably won't, you know, some spaces won't have that now if they choose to not put in parking.
Right, so for the folks who were uh here last time. Um the, the cities come, sorry, the building codes require. Uh parking for people uh to comply with immigrants, because the disabilities act and parking for people with disabilities. And there's a ratio. Um for every so many parking spaces you provide, you have to provide so many ADA spaces. And. So that's still there. Um so if somebody, you know, builds a thirty space parking lot, they're going to have to have. I don't know how many, I don't know how many, but a couple uh ADA spaces at least. And. Um the problem uh the Commissioner McCann is asking about is. Well, if we're not requiring any parking, there's no parking lot, they're not going to be required to put those ADA spaces in. Um and that is where uh it stands right now. The. The. The code does not include any. Uh ADA specific requirements for minimums. And um. Uh it's possible the city could. Evaluate as part of our curb management, whether any on-street ADA spaces are. You know, acceptable or how, what, what process people would have to go through to, to get those.
Thank you. Um the next question that I had is, um. I noticed there. There are a number of um modifications related to tree planting and parking, you know, vegetation, that sort of thing that sort of got wrapped into this. And if I understood you correctly, you said that that's a result, kind of a direct result of the state requirements. Um so. Can you clarify if the language that was used, like the quantity of tree plantings, those sort of things, were those direct state mandates? Or are those just the city trying to, you know, trying to create language to comply with? More of a goal from this, from the state?
Thank you, I'm trying to find the. So there's one on.
There's one on driveway trees being twenty-five feet apart and and certain amount of coverage. And then there was another one about trees in general covering fifty percent of parking lots. Over a certain size.
Yeah, I would, I wanted to point folks to page sixty-one of the packet.
Okay.
Which is. Sixty, thirty, fifteen. Uh ten, so there's a tree canopy, fifty percent. Provision there. And. The driveway trees is on page twenty-nine of your packet. Um sixty, oh, five, twenty. Five. The, no, five D. That's a combination to, to, sure, to be brief. Some of it was directly trying to do what they asked, but. Um I think for the. See. Yeah, I mean, the fifty percent canopy was a specific number. That the state required in the tree canopy covering the parking lot one. Um. A lot of the language after that was trying to make that clear and objective. So to be clear and objective about fifty percent. We had to try to define what a parking, what the parking area was. So you had the denominator. Um and then we had to. So tell people how to calculate the coverage. So that's the numerator, and then you understand like when you divide, did I hit fifty percent? So a lot of that language is ours until you get to the. End where it mentions the twenty-twenty-one ANSI A three hundred standards. And that was a specific. State requirement. With the. Driveways. My recollection is. I'm just going to remember that they, they wanted to. Yeah, they wanted a, they wanted it to be. Continuous. I think I have the right.
No, I think, I think what they said was one tree for every twenty-five feet and that they wanted you to plant the trees. Such that the. Like there would be clusters or or sort of at least a certain number of points where canopy touched and overlapped, so it continues canopy.
Yes.
Um. I guess this is kind of my long way around saying, like, thank you for the clarification. I think that um. As you're looking at future studies, I, I think it really would be good for the city to look at a comprehensive kind of evaluation of. Overall tree and vegetation code within the city. Um both for tree removal, mitigation, tree protection, as well as like all your planting standards. And sort of bringing that all into alignment um and sort of up to date, because I think, you know, there are potential for. You know, the fifty percent coverage could be really challenging, depending on what species you pick. And do we have big enough planters to really actually legitimately accommodate the size of trees that need to be planted to create that? Level of canopy. So I think all of that is just sort of my recommendation, put that on the list. As you're looking at transportation and all the other things that probably need evaluation as a result of that code. And.
Yeah, and that is uh that is on the list. We, we did a tree code audit. Last couple of years, so we actually had a consulting firm help and our burst help us evaluate. The many things that are maybe not. Uh as effective as we'd like in the code regarding trees and plants. And. Um it's on the, it, it's on the list. It's pretty high on the list of things we'd like to do when we have the resources, meaning staff and kind of. Uh consultant help. The one piece of good news I have for you on that is for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan, which is just the. It's the twelve-hundred area growth acre on the southwest corner of the city. We actually recently signed a contract with. The same arborist and firm that did our audit to help us come up with a brand-new tree code for Cooper. Um because it has so many natural resources and, and us tree canopied areas. Um and there's going to be a lot of development, let's make sure we can get uh up at good balance. So hopefully, what we learn from that. We can get a jumpstart on the full tree code for the whole city when we get a chance to.
Well, that's great news. And yeah, I think, I think just making sure you have a comprehensive look, not only at the trees, but just the vegetation in general and just making sure things are styled in and making sense for um. People are doing projects to really actually make that code work. Uh and hit the goals you're trying for. All right, I had one last thing, and it was, it's actually more specific, and it was on page twenty-three. Um item number eleven, which got struck, um having to do with temporary displacement of parking. And and maybe you can tell me why this. Is struck in its entirety, or maybe there's a consideration for keeping some of it. I think what it was saying was. The displaced parking that's temporarily displaced cannot occupy or obstruct. Parking for another use or site. And I understand taking out the statement that said it couldn't obstruct minimum required parking because that's now in conflict. But it seems like if you do have temporarily displaced parking from that exists that, that somebody is displacing. And trying to find a new home for it, that it should not obstruct another use or another site, right? Like, so maybe it's more like striking the language around minimum. I think I didn't understand why it would be struck in its entirety, and therefore you could obstruct somebody else's parking.
Yeah, we, we can take a little bit closer look at that. I think. Uh my first thought is. Because there won't be any required parking by the city. Um that will all be. Uh between private folks, you know, if, if it's in a. If it's in a uh. Say like a strip mall where there's multiple, like multiple people sharing a parking, like they're. The city won't have anything to say about that because they have to like determine how they're going to share that. Um and if you're parking on somebody else's property, they can be towed. So but I think it's a good tip. Just in case we miss something in that section, we can take a fresh look and make sure we didn't accidentally strike something that messes that up.
Yeah, I think, I think a bunch of it does need to be struck because a bunch of it would be in conflict with the new code, but it seemed like the section maybe should be modified in language and not struck in its entirety.
Thank you.
All right, and that was all I had. Are there other comments, questions from the commissions? Okay, so we will now welcome public comment on the proposal. Um comments are limited to five minutes. Do we have? Anyone who wants to give comment? I will say for those, maybe I'll go through the, the piece of it. So for those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to the chair that you would like to speak. Can't get my mouse to work right at the moment.
Commissioner, again, we have no one who wishes to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so staff has stated we do not have anyone from the public who wishes to comment, so we will move on. Does staff have any final comments?
I do not. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Does the city attorney have any final comments?
Uh Commissioners, Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. I don't have any comments unless you have questions of mine.
We do, thank you, Robin. Um are there further comments or questions from the commission? No, all right, then that is it. And with that, we are adjourned at seven eleven P M.